Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. And we'll start at roll call with Councilman Homer.
Homer Henry, City Councilmember.
I should do the date, huh? It is Tuesday, April 25th, 2023, 7 o'clock.
Still Homer, City Council.
Dr. Joseph Ford, City Councilmember.
Ronnie Price, Mayor.
Mike Warrington, City Councilmember.
Troy Tabor, City Councilmember.
Tim Berry, City Councilmember.
Buck Buchanan, Police Chief.
Donna Davis, Chief Financial Officer.
Lance Onstadt, Assistant City Administrator.
Chad Russell, Fire Chief.
Rick Lanzers, Director of Public Works and Utilities.
J.T. Klaus, City Attorney.
Susan Renner, City Clerk.
Jennifer McCoslin, City Administrator.
All right, at this time, we'll ask Daniel Ivey with Anchor Baptist Church to lead us in prayer.
All right, let's pray. Dear Lord, as we come to you in prayer, we do thank you for this time to gather, to work in the community. I pray that you would just guide and direct in the decision-making process, that you would just grant wisdom tonight, and that you would help us to make decisions that would be honoring and glorifying to you, and would be good for Andover and the community, and that you would be honored and blessed in all that takes place here today. We ask all these things, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Amen. This time, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this time, I'll open the floor for the public forum. If you have something you'd like to say, state your name and your address. Keep it short. All right, no takers. Public forums closed, acceptance of agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Moved to accept the agendas presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. 13th Street Sport Park, and Rick is gonna speak to us about that. 13th Street Sport Park Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that the consent agenda.
Oh, I skipped one?
Number seven.
Well, number seven, not one, but.
All right, thank you, Homer, I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If you should allow me, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda. Item 7.1 through 7.5 is presented.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero, I'm just trying to get us out of here. Now, 8-1, 13th Street Sport, gosh dang, I couldn't say it right the first time. 13, one more time. 13th Street Sport, guaranteed maximum price amendment.
Might need to say it slower.
Rick, would you please?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Soon, we'll have something pop up on the screen up there. So, I'm gonna give us a little bit of history, how we got to the point we're at with the 13th Street Sports Park project. In July of '21, the Park Master Plan was completed. It was named the Playbook 2030. On November 21st, the sales tax was approved by the citizens of Andover, and PEC was selected by a committee, a selection committee, for, to be brought on as the engineering firm for that work. They were then presented to council for the award of the contract, and they were awarded that contract, and then they began to work on it. Since that time, we've had discussion at five Parks and Rec advisory board meetings, five council workshops, city council meetings, and one city council, or one council workshop in Prab, kinda combined meeting with the baseball and softball. Stakeholders invited for input at that meeting. PEC, as part of their team, had retained SFA, Sports Facility Advisors. It's a pretty large national firm that specializes in sports facilities. SFA presented at a couple workshops in Prabs. Early on, was more a gathering, listening for input. They then came back with a feasibility study. The feasibility study covered items like a return on investment for artificial turf fields and recommendations of sizes of fields. SFA's recommendations of grass outfields with dirt infills, along with the sizing of all the fields at 250 feet, to allow all ages from T-ball to 12U baseball and up to 14U softball, thus accommodating the needs of the youth recreation program for, on all fields. Excuse me, 14U baseball will be utilizing the community's investment in the fields located at the local high schools. I was gonna show you the layout up there, but it's not up there quite yet. One of the fields is laid out to be able to be expanded to 300 foot in the future, if so desired and needed.
Maybe, Rick, if we could just let the public.
Technical problems, yeah.
Okay, I'll just keep on moving, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Let the public know that we, we know what it looks like, and maybe it'll be available online later, right?
Yes. We will be releasing a story map that we kinda had some drafts of, and we just need to make sure, get it all tweaked to make sure it's all correct. We'll be releasing that soon, that you can walk through, and it talks about all the different features of it. So, I was gonna show, and it's in your packet, the, I'm getting frustrated here, the.
Site plan?
No, the site plan wasn't gonna be earlier. I was gonna show the priority listing that came out of the study from the feasibility study, or the, not feasibility study.
Survey?
The Master Plan 2030 contains this sheet. And the sheet lists all the items that were priorities, and it lists them as top priorities, medium priorities, and lower priorities. The six of the highest ranking priorities in that scientific study, five are out, or six are outdoor, five are in this plan, and, or, sorry, five are, excuse me, six are out, six are in it, five are in this, or, my goodness gracious, I've gotta turn around. Sorry. Six outdoor items are up there. Four of the five are in this park. I just said it wrong again, I don't know why I can't get past that. I'll say it one more time. There are six items in there, five of them are outdoor, and four of those five are in it. The one that's not is an outdoor swimming pool. In the medium priority rankings, there are 12 items are outdoor, five are included in this plan. There's also, I didn't highlight it in your packet, but there's a picnic kinda shelter area next to the playground splash pad, and a great lawn that can act as a gathering space for events like food festivals and other events. So, we kind of got two more items kinda in there, but I didn't highlight them because they weren't specifically for that. Then the lower priority rankings, there are three items that have been addressed. I'd be remiss to not say in my packet that was submitted to you guys for my staff memo, there's a lot of verbiage in there about the, kind of the challenging time that we're in right now for building projects. You guys have seen a lot of projects come that have to be rebid because they exceeded the estimates. It's kind of a tough time right now, and so we are about at the 60% stage of the plans. We invited or contracted with Crossland to be a partner in this and help us wade through this because we knew we were on a tight time schedule. And getting to this point and being $4 million overbid, or $3 million overbid, was not really a viable option for us. We wanted to be able to meet our May 22 construction start time so that we don't miss a ball season by having to go back and redesign, or catalog our things, or something along that lines. So, tonight here is Crossland, Wade with Crossland, and Nick with PEC. And they are here to answer any questions that you might have on this. I would just say that we were able to meet the final estimate that we had and stay within budget. As I noted in the memo, you know, there was some reduction in the contingency, but that's still part of the construction budget to, to stay within it. There was some moving and shaking by Wade at the last minute to help us get there, but we're there, and I feel pretty good about this project. If anyone has any questions for me, or Wade, or Nick, we'd be more than happy to try to answer them.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
One question on the, this curious, the stands for the, the fields? Is it just one set of stands right behind the home plate?
Yeah, so, there's one set, but right behind home plate, that does have a shade structure on top of it. And then there's areas on the side that if in the future we wanted to add those, a lot of times when you go to these fields now, there's a lot of people that like to bring their lawn chairs and set, and they can sit right there, too. But there is room to accommodate more in the future if so should need.
Cool. It's nice to have shade. And I guess the second question would be the height of the fencing. There's a pretty, if you look at those sections when you go to ball fields, there's usually like two sections high, and then softballs or baseballs always come right over that. So then there's some of the fields that have three sections high on that to stop the balls from coming over, do you, do you know?
So, we opted, and I'll have to defer to Nick on the height of that, or Wade, he'd wanna probably know that better than me. But the, I would comment that the backstops are netting, so they can be extended, you know, to a pretty good height. It's a, I thought it was an upgrade cost because it used to be an upgrade cost. I think it was almost a little bit of a wash. But, you guys wanna answer that one? Do you know the height?
Yeah, I'm Nick with PEC. The height of the backstop, so it's netting, we're 30 foot high with the netting. We've got, so if you've been to Goddard, the home plate's a little bit further away from backstop. That allows the balls to get over it easier, so we've pushed, pushed home plate a little bit closer than what Goddard typically is. So, you shouldn't have that issue with balls flying over.
Does Goddard have the three sections high at a rate tall?
I think they're sitting at 30 foot tall.
Because 30 feet, I'm not, I can't picture.
It's pretty tall. 30 foot's pretty tall.
I believe they also netting over the top of the.
Didn't used to.
Yeah, they just added that.
Come up the Genesis, come up Goddard Genesis.
Oh, I wasn't thinking about Genesis. Yeah, I was thinking about like the, the Goddard High School. There's a, a really well-done.
Typically, typically, high school baseball is at 30 foot tall for the backstop as well.
Okay, thanks. That's all for me.
Mr. Mayor. Rick, in regards to ongoing costs, when we're talking, I didn't know, we still haven't had our budget talk yet, but what kind of, once the park gets done, what kind of ongoing costs are we gonna have with, are we gonna need more employees to facilitate the maintenance of this park? And what does that look like in number of employees? Or are you gonna use current staff to take care of that?
So, to answer your question, yes, more employees will be needed. The Park Master Plan did address that in the staffing portion of the report. We are working through the, the budget section of it. And one of the other things that's going along with this is, we'll likely probably have two splash pads in operation next year. And those require a lot of touch, just to check them and make sure they're operating in a safe manner. So, we're looking at, trying to evaluate whether we can maybe get like a part-time help for weekends to cover that because it's a seven-day-a-week type of structure that's open. The, as far as full-time FTEs, we're looking at two in the preliminary budget at this point, which I believe we have a meeting tomorrow, so you'll be seeing that up close and personal. And then, in the future, as you add on and get to the part where you add the community center, there's also more staffing required for that, too. As you build stuff, obviously, it, it takes a little bit more time to maintain and take care of these things.
Are we repurposing anything from the current park to this park?
No, the, so the one playground is staying, it's over by the ACC now. It'll stay until we ever, until we get to the next phase. Excuse me. The existing park that's over in 13th is well in excess of 20 years. Replacement parts are hard to come by. We've had discussion with Nick about this even, that to even take them apart and try to move them gets very expensive, and a lot of times, its cost just exceeds its value by quite a bit. There are a few things out there that people expressed that they wanted, but it was like the light poles where the youth football kinda was practicing for a while there, as you ride across from ACC. But those came with, if you can take them down nice and gently, and then like deliver them to us and, and help put it up, and that gets very expensive, obviously. And we were advised that, by the contractor, that doing that has obviously cost more than to just demo them out and take them for scrap metal.
Scoreboards, are we?
We are, I'm sorry, we are repurposing the scoreboards on-site, yes. The four are four or five years old, and they work in good condition. We have to build new frames for them to mount them and rebuild, poles for them, and then one new scoreboard because we are adding one field.
But the lights will be new on those fields?
Yeah, the lights will be new, they will be LED. That is one of the few things we're gonna have that will probably cost us less to operate because the old-style lights were, they're energy hogs, quite frankly. And they had well past their lifespan, by the way.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Remind me, the, the fields are, are gonna be grass because we decided not to go with astroturf, is that right?
Correct.
I was listening and to a conversation of turf versus grass this last weekend at my daughter's softball game. And the discussion went that as far as cost goes, long-term, that grass is way cheaper, even though you're watering it versus the turf. Turf will tear up in about 10 years through use, and then you're throwing $300,000 at it again. I mean, was that, I mean, I'm assuming that you guys did that kind of a cost analysis for, I don't recall.
SFA in their report covered the return on investment on your turf over grass, and it basically, it's, it's kind of a wash, it's not quite a wash. I think it actually probably costs a little more turf unless you can extend the life a little bit longer. Turf is not maintenance-free, it is lower maintenance. You still have to groom it and things like that, and keep people from, in their sunflower seeds out there and stuff like that. You know, it's, but it's, it's, it's not, it's not a complete savings in manpower every day, you know? And then, so it doesn't equate out to be a savings in money to go to turf.
And while it's probably subjective, at least the people that I've talked to on my daughter's team love grass over turf when they're playing softball. Pretty dramatic difference. So, I'm, again, glad that we're, we're doing this.
Yeah, it requires a little more daily touch than turf, obviously. But I, it's, yeah, I mean, there's football teams that don't like turf, and there's football teams that like turf.
Very subjective.
You know, there's disadvantages to everything.
Cool.
You are relocating some trees, though, not repurposing, but relocating, right?
We have moved a bunch of trees.
Eighty some, right?
It's a lot. We moved some from another location, too, so I don't know if all 80 was from there. There was another location called Summerlin that had a little bit of a tree farm in it. Instead of tearing those out, we went and grabbed those and repurposed those. Some of those got planted along 159th, right around, right next to where someone was at. So, it was nice and convenient to move those over there. And then a lot of them made it down to the Central Park here. If you look down by the shop that we just built, it's a lot harder to see it now because we moved a lot of cedar trees from over there over. Yes, we did repurpose as many trees as we could spade out with the, between feasibility of moving them, whether or not they would probably live or not, and the size of the spade capabilities. There are some trees that are getting saved, that are actually in it, in the field, not in the field, obviously, but inside the, the layout of the complex. There was a few locations where there are some mature trees that could be saved. So, that's a good thing, it won't be all newly planted, 10, 12-foot-tall, 2-inch duck caliber trees, or something like that.
Was there anything as far as what we started with that had to be, I guess, value engineered out because we didn't have enough money for the budget?
Yes, there was a, a list of things that included things like the outer trail, the outer, I guess I'd call that the native area of the trail, that's a native, runs around the perimeter of the park and ties into Red Bud Trail on either end. Was opted to be the chat-like material that is similar to the Red Bud Trail as you cross Patricia Lane, as you're driving into the park, as you're headed out of town. It was moved over to that chat-like material there. All the interior walkways are still concrete, but the outer one was that. There was a few other items that was taken advantage of in value engineering. There was originally a large roof structure that went over the restroom area, and kinda in there is a little artistic shape to it, but it was very expensive, and it's kind of a custom metal-type thing, and it was, it was value engineered out. We removed some adult fitness areas. We lowered the budget for site furnishings. We did not include items into the concession stand immediately, like warmers and that kind of things because our intent at this point is probably to continue to use food trucks for our program, but have an area that somebody could come in and utilize if they wanted to rent the building as part of, say, a youth tournament and want to have a window to sell out of and didn't want to share their profits or something with a, a food truck vendor or something along that lines.
One question, Rick, about that. I know we talked about that yesterday. Are we still gonna have an ice machine and ice available? I mean, and a sink and?
There is a sink. I believe there's an ice machine in it, I remember seeing that. If not, I thought I saw that in the budget, but if not, we'll, we'll have it put in.
Make sure that we have.
It's plumbed for, so it could be put in.
Just for a safety, you know, or a first aid type of thing?
The other be sink and running water and all that kind of items. There also is, on the bathrooms, I would point out, there are bathrooms that, on both sides of that structure, so that somebody that's over at the playground or splash pad can go in, and if a parent wants to stay over with other kids, they can still watch your kid go into that bathroom from the playground area.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. The outside trail, will it have the trail markings on it as well?
Yeah, I would imagine we would name it as a trail, and I haven't gotten to that far yet on it. And we're still trying to roll out the rest of our, our network, but that is something that, it wasn't in the plan as far as the contractor. We usually do that in-house with our sign shop, and we would, I wouldn't sure we'd work that into there.
That'd be awesome.
Was that it as far as the value engineering?
Oh, I'm sorry. There was a reduction in the gateway signage from 50,000, or from 100,000 down to 50,000. And I can't remember, did I mention the adult fitness, removing the adult fitness, you know, where you have like things along the trail where you can do like little workout things? That was removed. And there was two pickleball courts that were removed. We went from six to four. I would also point out, this is a good time to point out, that the pickleball courts are laid out, that if there is a move, like we've seen in the industries before, where things kinda come and go. Right now, pickleball's super hot, but it may be turned back into tennis. They could be converted back into a tennis court at a later date. And there was some reduction in, in the open-air structure budget, shade bucket, shade budget that could be added to at another time, you know? Those could be put in later.
Are those things that were value engineered out, can they all be put in later? I mean, like, I think you said the archway. I mean, can that be updated later, kinda like the Central Park archway, or?
So, the archway wasn't removed out, just the entry. As you're, come from the parking lot into like the playground area, in the Buffalo area, there's some signage. That was kinda scaled down in the budget. The archway, I would love to put the archway in, and it's still my desire to put that in as you come into the park with the final phase, when we do the ACC, or, you know, community center. Be a part of that.
What about the shade structure? Can that be added later?
Yeah, we could always put a shade structure in. If you're gonna put it in where there's existing concrete, you would have to core the concrete and put it in, but it could be put in, yes. Those could be added relatively inexpensive. The concession stand equipment could be added, you know, at any time. You know, it just takes money, obviously. The only thing that I think would be really difficult to re, put back in would be the cover over the concession stand and the two additional pickleball courts that are, like, posted tension out off the side. Would be very hard to, it could be done, I suppose. Anything could be done if there's enough money to, but it'd be a little bit more hard, yeah.
Thanks.
Councilman Henry? I think it's worth mentioning that we didn't reduce the number of locations. We just made the structure itself a little more cost-effective on the shade structures.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I moved to accept the bids as presented and accept the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment, number two, from Crossland Construction Company Incorporated, Wichita, Kansas, for the 13th Street Sports Park Bid Package A dot two in the amount of $12,41,214, and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment.
Second. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
It's exciting. It's gonna be a great park.
When are they breaking ground this summer?
May 20, we're actually gonna have a groundbreaking ceremony, I hope she's making it in here.
But, May 11th.
May 11th.
With a secondary date in case it rains the exact week later, then May 22nd would be the actual start of construction.
And you'll find that information in the mayor message this month, too.
You're all invited out. We'll have hard ads for you to wear.
I hope we have a rain delay.
I think it was even on social media today as well, too.
Nine, Andover Municipal Golf Course Repairs, Golf Course Irrigation Repairs. Rick's gonna talk to us about that.
Good evening, Mayor, Mr. Council. The, so the golf course operating budget for this year included monies for repairs to the irrigation system. Irrigation systems have been a little bit challenging for Oaks Golf. Last year, Oaks Golf, along with some city staff and a pump representative that he brought to the table, worked on getting the system up to generate a little bit more water. There was some tweaking that really benefited that. The downfall to the extra water and pressure was that there was some breaks that started developing in some locations. The part that they really want to get addressed is to get, obviously, the greens irrigated properly. And there's some areas where controllers not working, some valves are not working properly. And Dick with Oaks Golf and I worked earlier in the year to, well, we started last year trying to work on a package for them to bring early in the, in the year. And he ran into a lot of problems that a lot of us were running into, is getting somebody, even give him a price to do the work. He was, you'll notice in your packet, you only have one proposal because everybody else's proposal was, they couldn't get there until either the middle of the year, which is not ideal for golf course irrigation work, or, you know, a lot, lot later. The one, Calola Tree Lawn Care, did agree to be able to come in and do some of this work. I would point out that this is a hourly rate type of not-to-exceed, and then the city is buying the materials, and there'll be no upcharging that because Oaks Golf will buy them, we'll just pay the invoice direct for that. So, the total cost of the project is estimated to be at 27,000. This is kind of, we broke it into two phases because we still got, they still got other work they want to do, but there's not enough time to do it now, and then in the fall, hopefully, we can come back, and there's, we're even hoping there's a little bit of money left in this one to combine with their other money they have left to work on Phase Two. This is a multi-year-type project because to try to tackle this all at once would be, well, first off, as we found, or as Dick found, I guess, there's not anyone out there that really can jump on it and do it right now and get it all done anyway. So, there are wanting to concentrate on the, the greens, and that's where this work is focused in on, getting the greens and some of the controller upgrades fixed and up, up and going. Dick is here, and I know he'd be, love to talk to you about this project, and he'd probably like to share his story about the main break we had today even out there.
We can pass all the breaks. I'm Dick Stance with Oaks Golf. Yes, we battled it, we, when we got the pump station repaired and giving us adequate pressure to cover areas as, as it should, we discovered the weakness in the system of, of multiple breaks, so we had a rough year last year. And so, we put a plan together to address not only the leak situation, but the coverage situation on the entire golf course. And as Rick mentioned, we're focusing on the greens first. That's the proposal that you have in front of you. And then we would continue on in order of four more phases to address. on in order of four more phases to address tees, then to address mainline connections and then address fairway irrigation coverage, et cetera. So we, once we get, now that the pump station is working properly and once we get phase one done, as we look at what, how much we need to replace going forward, operating the system for this year and then perhaps next year will give us a good read on how much more of this work we really need to do because initially Rick and I talked about replacing essentially the entire system, which would be all the mainlines. But we wonder that if we, we go through phase one and phase two in particular, replacing the connections to the mainlines, not all of them as yet, but connections to the mainlines, those have been the weak point. So we'll just kinda read, read the results before we then commit ourselves to go forward. And as Rick mentioned, we wanted to do a lot of this work in the winter. I'm on my seventh contractor as far as entertaining, discussing and taking bids and he's the only one that I could find, but, but I have confidence. I think that I met with him, he's knowledgeable, I think he'll do a really good job and I'm looking forward to having him. He said he can start on, I believe it's May eighth, which is a week from Monday and we hope to get this, hope to get this going. I'd entertain any other questions you have.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question. We were talking about it at lunch. How old is this system, do we think?
So the course was built in the early nineties? I should know this answer. I'm guessing it was probably the original system. So as you're probably aware, you know, your controllers, your valves, your heads, those things are all life cycled probably out to be a reality. The mainline pipe, I feel like, you know, PVC pipe is usually rated for a lot longer lifespan than those other parts. So hopefully we can get another twenty, thirty years out of the pipe itself, which is part of the expense, but it's gonna be expensive to upgrade the system even not doing that. It's gonna take some time and some money to do it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to authorize irrigation system repairs by Koala Tree Lawn Care in the amount not to exceed seventeen thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars and authorize the purchase of the parts to make such repairs by Oaks Golf on behalf of the city in the amount not to exceed ten thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Second. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you as usual for your support.
Cornerstone Fifth Edition, Cornerstone Fifth Edition Bid Award, ten one. Mr. Mayor and Council, this, if you might remember, I think it was the last council meeting, we rejected these bids because there was a, an error in the bid documents that listed the quantity of the asphalt as five inches thick, Andover Standard is seven inches thick, it's five inches of base and two inches of a wearing surface. When we approached the contractors about the cost, you know, and verified they all, you know, stated, yes, they bid at five and obviously they paid more, asphalt's not cheap. So because the cost to change it would have changed the potential of who the low bid was, it was, decision was made to keep everything above board to rebid it out. The Pearson was the low bidder on the first time and Pearson was the sole bidder on the second round because everybody kinda saw, saw the hands and nobody really, I think, wanted to waste their time and, and tried to, I guess undercut somebody. So anyway, staff has recommended the award of the Cornerstone Fifth paving for, in the bid amount of five hundred eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and what? It says reject all other bids, but it was the only bid. And so they can get this project going, the, the project is setting with the sewer and storm sewer, well, sorry, the sewer and water has been completed for a little bit now and the project's ready for paving.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Did the unit price essentially just stay the same and then they?
So everything stayed the same except for where it went from five inch to seven inch asphalt and escalated about where I would have thought it would escalate about. And quite honestly, we asked the contractor to tell us how much he would raise it to go from five to seven and when it went above the next low bid, it, it, it didn't give the extra low, the next low bid the chance to, you know, to verify or whatever. So I, it, it came out pretty good in the end. I feel like we got what we're paying for, well, the project's getting what it's paying for. This is a, I believe this is seventy-five, twenty-five, so the city's got twenty-five percent skin and a game on the paving on this one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Move to accept the lowest qualified bid from Pearson Construction LLC Wichita, Kansas in the amount of five hundred and eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and reject all other bids and authorize the mayor to sign the contract for the Cornerstone Fifth paving and incidental drainage improvements?
Second. Any further questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I do want to thank staff for opening the bids again to everybody. I, I think that's fair and it was on them to not turn it in, so ending up with one bid. So I appreciate staff doing that and taking the time to do that.
Thank you, that's our job. Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Founder, Founder's Parkway eleven-one, resolution parcel number R two-three-six-nine-two. And Lance is gonna talk to us about it.
Mr. Mayor, Council, excuse me, for your consideration tonight is a resolution declaring the necessity to appropriate private property for public use and this is in relation to the Founder's Parkway project, which is the baggage road that we've spoken about for ten plus years north of US fifty-four, four hundred. As we all know, additional right of way is required to construct this project. The property that specifically impacted tonight is located at four oh one south end of a road. Staff continues to negotiate with that property owner, but we do find it advisable to begin the eminent domain process concurrently with those ongoing negotiations based on the timeline to construct the project. So the resolution for your consideration tonight is the first step in that eminent domain process. Any questions about this resolution or the process or the project, I can certainly answer.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
I think we talked about it before, but just want to make sure that we're not going to hit them on parking. They're losing parking, but just to want to make sure that we're not going to make them required for the parking that they had that they're losing.
Yeah, so if I understand the question, it's, would the reduction in the parking that's as a result of this acquisition bring them below the required parking from our zoning regulations?
Correct.
Yeah, the, there will be sufficient parking per our zoning code even after this acquisition.
Okay, perfect.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt a resolution declaring the necessity to appropriate, appropriate private property for the use of City of Andover, Kansas pursuant to KSA two-six dash two-zero-one.
Second. So in, so in deciding how many parking spots you can have, for example, if you have a restaurant, you know how many seats, but this is a different animal because it has groceries. Does, how, how does, how does that change the number of parking spots that one is necessary to have or required to have, I should say?
Sure, our zoning code attempts to provide allowances and flexibility to minimum parking requirements. So a lot of times you, you'll, you'll combine different ones, you'll do averages, you'll work with a property owner or business owner or operator to find what's sufficient for their needs. So we try to provide the zoning administrator and the business community the ability to negotiate flexibly on minimum parking requirements. But yes, that's kind of the failing on minimum parking requirements and zoning codes is that traditionally they attempt to be extremely prescriptive and the use of property for operations is rarely prescriptive and unique. So it's a little bit of an art form, not necessarily a science. When we updated our zoning code last in two thousand eighteen, seventeen or eighteen, we provided the ability to be flexible based on real-time circumstances.
Because it's kind of a, I mean, like Dylan's, there's no seats or nothing, so you're strictly guesswork almost to figure out how many parking spots you need, correct?
Yeah, so there's not, you know, for restaurants, for example, you know, there's one parking space required for every two and a half seats in a restaurant plus one per employee and it might be completely different for a retail space. So we'll try to find a, a logical, rational application of a parking requirement based on two uses that are combined. So again, more of an art form than a science.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Yorktown Parkway, oh, did I just do that one? No. Yorktown Parkway twelve-one, ordinance parcel number R two-one-eight-eight-zero. And again, Lance will talk to us about this.
So twelve point one through twelve point four, I'm gonna kinda give you a, an overall briefing, if you will, on all four and then Mr. Mayor, if you'll call each one, each one will have its, obviously will have its own motion. So again, the, for your consideration or ordinances, within those ordinances legally describe the private property, the subject private property. So when you make those motions, you're adopting the ordinance which describes those. But generally, twelve point one, twelve point four include ordinances providing for the condemnation and acquisition of private property through the use of eminent domain. These four are in relation to the Yorktown Parkway project between Central Avenue and Thirteenth Street. Much like the Founder's Parkway street project, this street project will obviously require the need to acquire additional right of way. Similar to, so as the resolution that you guys just approved on the previous item for the Founder's Parkway is the first step in the condemnation process, these ordinances is the second or the next step in the condemnation process. As such, you will remember there we, the governing body did approve resolutions at a previous meeting. So again, tonight, the ordinances for your consideration here are just that next step in the condemnation process in order to construct the Yorktown Parkway project.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt an ordinance authorizing and providing for the condemnation and acquisition of private property by eminent domain for the use of the City of Andover, Kansas pursuant to KSA two-six dash two-zero-one.
Second. And Mike?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Any further questions or discussions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Do I need to say the parcel number?
No, again, you're making a motion and ultimately voting to adopt the ordinance that's attached to this item, which legally describes the, the private property. So the motion doesn't need to contain the parcel number.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Twelve-two, ordinance parcel, parcel number R two-one-eight-nine-six.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt an ordinance authorizing and providing for the condemnation and acquisition of private property by eminent domain for the use of City of Andover, Kansas pursuant to KSA two-six dash two-zero-one.
Second. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Twelve-three, ordinance parcel number two-one-eight-seven-eight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt an ordinance authorizing and providing for the condemnation and acquisition of private property by eminent domain for the use of the City of Andover, Kansas pursuant to KSA two-six dash two-zero-one.
Second. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Twelve-four, ordinance parcel number R two-two-one-nine-nine.
Mr. Mayor?
Did I do that right? Yes.
That's right.
I move to adopt an ordinance authorizing and providing for the condemnation and acquisition of private property by eminent domain for the use of the City of Andover, Kansas pursuant to KSA two-six dash two-zero-one.
Second. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. I just feel like making a statement and Tim has said it before, this is not something we enjoy doing. We make decisions often all the time on the best we can for fifteen thousand people that we represent. And so there's things we have to do that we don't necessarily enjoy, but it's for the best thing for the citizens of Andover as a whole.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Lance, you know, maybe it's a late question, but I think you said there's still ability to do negotiations with this as well, right? So I mean, this is just kind of in, in line and step to keep it moving, right?
Yeah, our preference is to, is to complete these acquisitions through the negotiation process and not use this, but you know, it's a, so we're gonna run those two alternatives concurrently, but you know, again, we find it advisable that we be prepared.
Thank you.
Member items, we'll start. Tim, would you like to?
Sure. So last Friday, the varsity baseball teams from Andover and Andover Central had their first ever dual match at Riverfront Stadium. The boys and I guess young men really had a great time at Riverfront Stadium playing against each other. Fortunately for, for my son, Andover Central won both games, but Jenny was there. Who else? Yeah, I don't think anybody else was there, but it was, it was a great matchup. If you have not been to the Riverfront Stadium, it's an amazing, beautiful stadium. But yeah, the, the, the young baseball players had a fantastic time, win, lose or, or whatnot. It's always fun to play on a, you know, any sort of major league or minor, minor league, you know, stadium. So it's a great time had by all. That was the biggest turnout. They started doing, doing the high school teams this year and so far, Andover Central and Andover, that was the largest turnout that they've had for a high school team. So it was a great time.
Was there any out of the park homerun?
There was not. My son did hit the top of the fence, but not over, so.
Nice.
He tried, he tried really hard. Second game, he tried too hard and he struck out, but, but it was, it was a good time. It was, it was really fun. Five bucks to get in, it was a great cost, the concessions aren't too expensive. I do have a question for Donna or Jenny. Where are we at with getting department heads access to their real live budgets, to their real live P and L, I guess?
That is something we are working on. I propose by July they should.
Perfect.
Matt is providing them, I believe it's weekly update, updated numbers, so we are providing them the numbers in the, in the meantime.
So that's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Tim, didn't you say that like it was a one, like the first time that all the teams got, or won all their games?
Oh, yes, I forgot to mention that. This, this past week for Andover Central, this is the first time that baseball, softball and soccer have all won against Andover at the same time for a spring sport, so.
It's pretty cool.
You know, so if you're on the Central side, yay, yay, if you're on the Trojan side, I'm sorry, guys, so.
My daughter plays softball and she had a great time beating them.
It was a good time, it was a good time this week. So soccer, the girl soccer had a fan, if, if anybody is a fan, when they played against the Trojans, they had two overtimes. It was a fantastic game from what I was told, unfortunately, I wasn't there, but it was a great game of soccer for the, and Central has a great soccer team and so does, you know, the Trojans have a great soccer team as well, so. They lost, Buck, is that what you said? Oh, okay, oh, okay, well.
Oh, Central did?
Oops, okay, well, they won last week, so. So that's all I got.
Joy killer, aren't you?
Yeah, thanks, Buck. I appreciate that. So I will remind everybody, you know, if you drive past the new fire stations coming along, great, it's looking wonderful. It's very exciting to see, you know, stuff getting put up and would you say, chief, the interior walls are being built next where they're starting to put the interior walls in a few, in a few weeks or a couple of weeks?
May second.
That's exciting.
And Aaron weather barriers going on today, so.
I will remind everybody what, this Saturday, Jenny, is the one-year breakfast, prayer breakfast, correct?
That is correct and actually it starts at nine AM, but I know many of you, maybe all of you, said you would be willing to serve if you could be there at eight-thirty AM because we are anticipating. we are anticipating people to come early. There has been a lot of excitement about this event. So be ready to serve at 8:30 AM.
And I was told that your miss planner, I know JR, so JR told me that he's never received so many emails from somebody who's planned so well that you. So.
A-type personalities at City Hall, I apologize.
He wants to compliment you on your planning. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Nothing tonight.
What?
No, just super stoked about, it's weird, a little tired.
Right, just Troy, species.
So, okay, Andover softball team, or Andover Central softball team did have something I've never seen before, and they had a 14-inning game. It was tied three to three for, it was a three-hour game. It's pretty awesome. We did outlast them and we won, so that was cool.
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
I did forget, Mr. Mayor, if I can say one more thing, sorry. Troy and I went to the League of Municipalities Conference in Hayes a couple of weeks ago. I just want to thank the citizens of Andover for letting us do that. You know, we all forget that, you know, this is paid for by tax money. And it is, it's a fantastic way to grow, learn, network, and all that fun stuff. So I just want to thank, you know, the citizens of Andover for letting us represent the city, you know, especially Mr. Vice President over here. He's in charge of the league. So, but I just want to, you know, we, you learn quite a bit, and it's just a good thing. So we appreciate, or I appreciate that. I'm sure Troy does as well.
Absolutely. And I guess one more thing for me.
Cut his mic.
Sorry, I apologize. Yeah, I cut my mic. So it's kind of fun. There's a, there's an education aspect to the league that all of us can be a part of. And they asked me to train on one of the things. So I'm going to train on artificial intelligence and how to use it within the cities. It's a four-hour training. So, yeah, just thought I'd throw that out there, too. And you guys can get it for free if you want. I'll just do it for you here, but.
Are you going to train or computer train?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm excited to have the 13th Street Park finally getting ready to be kicked off. So that's a long time coming. And the plan looks great, and I can't wait for it to start. And hopefully, next year, we'll have people playing on it.
Yep.
Awesome.
Joe?
I would like to congratulate my youngest daughter, Madeline, on her recent engagement. She will be getting married very soon. She'll be deploying to Japan, so she's going to take a husband with her, I guess. So it's going to be an exciting phase in her life that I am very thrilled to add a nice young man to the family. So love my daughter very much.
Congratulations. Tim, thanks for reminding her about the prayer breakfast on Saturday. So see you guys all there. Being, being happy to serve pancakes and sausage and that kind of stuff. So from the Long Term Recovery Committee, I don't think that, as far as the announcement last week, there, nothing's changed significantly as far as dollars and stuff. But we will have a table there. United Way will be there, and there's different vendors there that are going to be, have tables available. South Central Mental Health, 211. So if we find anybody, or, you know, while you're mingling, Tim, or, you know, dipping out syrup, and you find somebody that was affected by the tornado and hasn't had help, the 211 table will be there. So.
How long does that last before the remaining funds just go back?
You mean the committee?
Yeah.
The committee itself? It will last until the, all the funds are given out. The projected, when we started it, was 16 to 24 months.
Okay.
So we're not even quite to a year yet of that, and still have 400,000 to go.
650.
So.
So I was, I guess I was wondering if, if there were ever going to be remaining funds, and it doesn't sound like there are, but there was another tornado that hit Kansas a few weeks back, and it really tore up a bunch of homes there. And I just wondered if that money would be available.
I mean.
Unused dollars to go towards that.
I think it's hard to, hard to say where that's going to go. At this point, there's a lot of stories of gaps and stuff in, in people's insurance policies that we haven't even really heard as a committee right now. A lot of the money, I think, and Jenny, correct me if I'm wrong, the money that's been dispersed as of right now, has been a lot for deductibles. People that were made whole by their insurance companies. And yet, we have yet to see any true gap coverage issues. Uninsured, there's been a couple of claims that were under, uninsured renters. So the city, city got a grant to advertise South Central, who's the grant from, Jenny?
Central Kansas Community Foundation.
To advertise or help get out the word to advertise renters' insurance and the need for it. So that's been a big challenge, getting, getting that word out, because Elizabeth, our intern that was with us, just moved over to Cedric County for her job. She did a huge promotion to get landlords involved. No landlord showed up to that event. But, but, I mean, I think she gave it a good E for effort. And it wasn't to say that we didn't try various avenues, mail, email, phone, grassroots, trying to get people to attend that. And then, like Jenny has found, and Elizabeth found, a lot of the landlords in town, as far as managers of the apartments in town, already require renters' insurance. So there wasn't a huge necessary need for the apartments necessarily. So.
I, I do want to clarify a point. I mean, I, I think Councilman Henry's hit the nail on the head, but I would be shocked if, it sounds like that's a lot of money. I will be shocked if any of that money is remaining. We are tracking almost exactly, we've touched about a third of the cases, and we've gone through about a third of the money. And from here, it will only get more expensive, because as Councilman Henry alluded to, I just want it to be very clear to the public. So far, we've kind of got that low-hanging fruit. We've made up some deductibles, the very hard decisions. We've already heard of some gaps that are in the six-figure amount for one family. We won't be able to come close to touching that. The hard decisions will be how much we can help one family before we say that's the threshold, because we still have 120 or so cases we have yet to help yet. So I, I would love to have extra money, Councilman Tabor. I simply don't see that in the cards.
So in regards to the 120 to help, is it, they have not applied, or what's the?
Process is very slow. And this is something we've been trying to help the community understand as well. Insurance is, you know, a complicated process. Rick talked to you tonight about the labor shortages. A municipal golf course had to go to seven people to get somebody to do irrigation. So when you have 190 homes hit by a tornado, a YMCA on top of the regular building that's happening in this community, it can be tough to get the quotes that you need. It can be tough to work through the insurance. And then you need all of that to talk to each other to determine what's covered, what's not. And then homeowners are trying to figure out how they're going to handle that. And then on top of that, you have the United Way case management that's trying to help those individuals say, okay, we've got the documentation we need. We can now take this to Long Term Recovery.
It's kind of hard to help them until you know what the insurance has done, huh?
It is. It's a lot of chicken or the egg. It's a lot of waiting on, on different parts of the process to come together.
I've talked to many, many homeowners that just are just so frustrated. And one of them's a governing body member. So it's not been easy. Here we are a year later, and they're still, still having trouble with insurance companies. And so, all right, that's at least clarified it for me. I was wondering if it was, thank you. And I do appreciate the Long Term Recovery Committee, man. It's, it's a big deal, and it's not easy. So thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, before you adjourn, may I have a moment? I would like to tell you, so a few years at a Public Works Conference, I came across a program where cities were giving away trees. I thought that'd be kind of cool. So this ties in with the event Saturday. Last year, before our spring cleanup, we had purchased trees. We were going to do a handout, or not last year, oh, yeah, last year. It seems like it's been forever since tornado, and it seems like yesterday, all at the same time. But we had purchased saplings and were going to give them away during our, our planned cleanup. And they were, they were part of what suffered the tornado damage. And this year, we did give away saplings at the spring cleanup on Saturday. We have leftovers, so we will be giving those away if anyone wants trees, sapling at the event on Saturday. We'll be giving those away, and there'll be some Boy Scouts planting some of those, too. So if you know anyone who wants a small tree to plant, they can come out and get one, too.
Are they all sand plums?
They vary. Did I say sap, 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 saplings?
Saplings.
Saplings, not sand plums.
Oh, I only said that because I feel like my mother-in-law got two sand plums from that. Because I, she said, hey, I got something ready to do. So I planted two trees this weekend.
There was a few varieties of them, but I can't tell you what the exact numbers of each were. I'd also like to point out that in 180 minutes, we ran 265 cars through on Saturday. So it, I don't know that area of time that I looked down the road until it was 11 o'clock, that it wasn't almost all the way back to Central. So the crew worked really hard and battled through a few issues with maybe some things not showing up on time. But they worked really hard and got people in and out as fast as they could.
Do you have any stats, Rick? Like, how many trash trucks, or how many, I mean?
So they, they brought three trash trucks, and the, I don't have the weight on them, but one of their largest packers was pretty, pretty full, and the other two were really close to full, which would be pretty close to a record for us. One year, we did have to send one off and you bring it back, because it was, it was so busy. Then we collected about a normal count of tires, and a zillion barbecue grills.
Still? That amazes me. Every year.
Every year.
You say that, and I'm like, who the hell still has barbecue grills left that they need to get rid of? So.
It's, there's a lot of them. And we recycled that metal, and the metal recycler was full, maybe stuffed down in a little bit with some of our equipment, stuffing it down to get it in there. So they might have had to work to get it out when they got it to, to the location. But it was a good day. We had, one street guy came, and then he ran the new street sweeper over the parking lot to clean it up afterwards. And then your stormwater and engineering technician was there, along with your park crew, working that event.
Rick was working, too, by the way. I saw him busting his butt.
I didn't see you. Yeah, sorry.
No.
Tim had one of the grills.
Two of the grills. Actually, I just drove through, because I just like seeing how many people are here. It was packed.
I seen the long line, and I turned and went the other direction, man. I got rid of all my stuff last year.
Wait, did you drive right to the front of the line?
I did. Do you know who I am?
Hey.
Got whippled.
Why is everyone laughing?
I don't, I don't get it. What?
Before we close, I do want to, I want to say thank you to our detectives. Our detectives did an outstanding job in the last couple of weeks on, on recovering a truckload of money and getting it back to where the things belonged and stuff like that. And I bring that up. And it's also, by the way, we're starting the Citizens Police Academy in July. You can be 18 to, as old as you want to be, to go through it. And you'll get to experience a sample size of, of what our police officers do and what they go through. Scott's been through it. I think Homer's been through it. Troy dabbled in a little bit. And.
Shelby went through it.
Shelby's been in it, and I went through it. And I've got a couple of classes to make up, which I intend on doing. But it, it's kind of eye-opening. And, and you know, we watch way too many TV shows, and the dispatcher's sitting there eating pizza, watching TV. That ain't the way it works at all. And the young lady that, one-year anniversary of tornado, had been on duty about 10 minutes when she got to learn a crash course in what happens when your whole city goes upside down. So there's more to it than what folks think from, from the dispatchers to the detectives to, and they give you quite a, what else was it? The, you get to go through the simulator and, and see how easy it is to pull the trigger when you shouldn't have pulled the trigger. And it's, it's quite eye-opening, if you will. So if you get a chance to go through it, and it's not, what is it, six weeks, Buck?
Nine weeks.
Nine weeks. And if you miss one, it's not a big deal. They'll just harass you when you come back the next week, but you can always make it up next time or not. So it's a, it's a good thing to take seriously. I can't, I can't speak highly enough of it. That's all I got.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I want to thank Chief Russell for his annual report. It's always nice to flip through it and see all the pictures and what's going on in the last year and, and the progress. So I appreciate it.
You're very welcome. I was only the delivery boy. Felicia Massey does that for us and does an absolutely fantastic job. We also have, we don't have this year's on the web yet, but it will be on there soon. And every year we've done it is on the website.
All right. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move adjourn.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero.